Okay, we'll resume with the meeting. Do I need a motion to resume the meeting? Counselor Walsh, Deputy Mayor Byrd, all in favor, motions carried. Ed Whitmore, Chief Building Official. Consent application B one three six dash twenty-two for Burns Lot One.
Yes.
Through you, Mayor.
We received the consent application B dash one thirty-six dash twenty-two from Peterborough County Land Division. The county requires the township to submit a municipal appraisal form recommending or not recommending the consent application. So this application was submitted by Amanda Byrne. The effect of the application is to create a new residential lot. And I should say that our next report is pretty much identical to this because there is a lot two. And so you'll just hear me repeat everything again for the next application. They're both exact same size lots. The consent application is applicable to lands described as twenty-six zero-three North Asphodel Fifth Line. And that's concession five part lot twenty in the township of Asphodel Norwood, that's right at the top of the township, the north end. Purpose of the application is to allow a severance of a parcel of land having frontage on Asphodel Fifth Line of approximately eighty meters. Both two hundred and sixty-two feet in an area of approximately point four hectares, which is the minimum size for a rural residential lot. And that's one acre. The county planning department completed a preliminary severance review and the review indicated that a natural heritage evaluation study was required. Oakbridge Environmental Limited, they completed the natural heritage evaluation. And it's quite in depth. And I drew your attention to section ten and one. They concluded that provided the two proposed lots adhere to the proposed vegetation protection zone. Requirements that are illustrated in their report on figure seven, the severances should be permitted, meaning that they wouldn't have any effect, negative effects on the environment. The two lots were slightly adjusted to make sure that they conformed to the environmental report. Township staff have not received any negative correspondence from the neighboring properties. They would have had to have posted this on the site. It's been posted on the township website. In Asphodel Norwood, our official plan, the current plan allows a maximum of two lots to be severed from a rural designated property, provided they comply with all the policies and the prevention policy statement and the growth plan for the rear golden horseshoe and the county official plan and the municipal official plan requirements. And Corca has done peer review of this Oakbridge Environmental Limited study and they agree with their findings that they feel that it conforms to the provincial policy statement and the greater golden plan for the greater golden horseshoe. The applications appear to meet the minimum distance separation requirements. Those calculations were all done by the county. And if approved, the severed and the retained lands will be required to be rezoned. So the severed portion will end up being zoned rural residential. And the size of the proposed size meets all the requirements and the retained lands would be a rural exception zone, just to recognize the lot area of the rural zone. The conclusion. We've completed two municipal appraisal forms and one was to recommend the consent application due to it complying with the official plans and the criteria set out in the official plans. And then one not recommended. Not recommending the consent application because we're in the predicament of trying to protect your cultural lands as well. And upon council's decision, we will forward the municipal appraisal form to the county. And you'll see all the different attachments that are with this report. It's fairly thick. And I'll take any questions if there is any questions from anybody.
Fairly thick isn't the word for it. I found some different birds that I never knew even existed around here.
Right.
Any new questions of?
Through you, Mayor, to Ed on. I the plan that's been submitted, there's a portion of land between the existing property and then the two new lots. And I understand that's the part that's the placement of the lots that we're discussing, but on the minimum desk distant separation diagram, the lots are in the original position that was adjacent to the existing, an existing parcel. Was the MDS redone based on the new location of those lots of the shifting? I mean.
Well, you can, it wouldn't have been redone, but you could see that the nearest one is a long ways away.
Okay. As long as that's.
Counselor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious because it was a fairly thick file and I just had a curiosity, how much would a natural carriage review like cost, you know, some of the severing the land, like how much would one of these evaluations? Just at ballpark, because I think it was really, it was
It's in depth.
In depth, it was really in depth. I was actually impressed and I never knew what a summer complex or summer till or a new market till I had to go look those up. I just thought it was, I was just curious of cost.
Generally for a memo, it costs three thousand to five thousand and for a report like this, I would say it would be anywhere from three thousand to ten thousand.
Per lot?
Well, for the studies. Generally.
Any other questions?
Counselor Walsh. And when I look at them, there is still a space between, I'll call it lot two, I guess, between them and the neighbors to the south. And yes, it'd be nice to have it right down beside, you know, kind of have that little pocket in there, but when I look at it, the diagram, that's, that's some of that, right?
The hundred and twenty meter buffer to the wetland.
So here's my other thoughts on the whole process is. We had no links from any neighbors. It is family use, but the whole blocks, they're trying to separate for all of their kids. They are allowed to sever on their own property, so it's like, but they're keeping it the family. It would have been nice to move it to the south, have it right on top, but I understand from the wetlands perspective, that really kind of wasn't case. This is on land that is currently zoned rural and even with county OP changing whatever it does, it still looks like it's on rural. So we're not taking away from finding land in any way. So from that perspective, I struggle to say no to this severance. As it is under right now.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm sitting very similar to Barry and I did take a quick look at the at the property and it's certainly grown up with junipers and cedars and that sort of thing. So it is not actively farmed at this time and I'm not sure you could, given the location that that and the soil condition. So I know you did not in your report and recommend or not recommend. If a counselor such as myself was to ask you, is this a severance or a couple of severances essentially that you would recommend, what would your answer be?
I would recommend them.
Okay, thank you. That's, that was my, that was my assumption. It meets every, it meets everything and it's pretty hard to say no. So I just wanted your professional opinion on it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through you, Mayor, a comment. My concern is that it still does require zoning variation from rural to rural residential and it creates two new properties, residential properties, which my concern moving forward is that if other is creating a rural settlement area by like looking on the map of how many exist at the moment, we're creating another rural settlement area because the portion that lot existing, the original lot has already had three portions taken out of it over the years, obviously not within this parcel. So that, that that's my hesitation is that is protecting the rural aspect of our township and that does include open spaces. And those are, those are my concerns that I just, those are my thoughts. Questions or comments, but just where I'm thinking.
All right. Any other questions? Now I have a motion that council of the township of Asphodel Norwood accepts this report, report regarding consent application B one thirty-six dash twenty-two Burns Lot one oh one for information and further that the council asked township of Asphodel Norwood recommends or not recommends the consent application B one thirty-six dash twenty-two Burns Lot one and further the council of township of Asphodel Norwood direct staff to submit municipal appraisal form to Peterborough Land Division.
To recommend.
Recommend.
Yes.
Counselor War. Second. Counselor Walsh. All in favor. Motion's carried. Like to carry on, Ed.
Okay. Thank you through you, Mayor. This next application B dash one thirty-seven dash twenty-two. We received this from Peterborough County Land Division and we are required to submit a municipal appraisal form recommending or not recommending the application. The application was submitted by Amanda Burns and the effect of the application is to create a new residential lot. This is property is described as twenty-six zero-three North Asphodel Fifth Line concession five part lot twenty. And this applies the previous consent application. So this application, B dash one thirty-seven dash twenty-two is to allow the servants of a parcel of land have a frontage on Asphodel Norwood of eight eighty meters, two hundred and sixty-two feet in an area of point four hectares, which is one acre, which would meet the rural residential requirements identical to the previous application we just spoke to. The preliminary severance review required the natural heritage evaluation study that was attached. The study concluded that provided they locate the lots according to figure seven that the severances should be permitted. We did not receive any comments or correspondence from any of the property owners adjacent to this. Current official plan allows a maximum of the two lots to be severed in a rural designated property, provided you comply with everything, all the rules. The subject property is designated rural. Or in their opinion, advised that they're consistent with the provincial policy statement and with the growth plan for their greater golden horseshoe. Public Works have reviewed the both applications and has advised me that entrance permits can be obtained for safe access to the properties. It's pretty flat out there. And the minimum distance separation requirements have been calculated that there lots far enough away from least this lot. And if approved, these lots will come back. Or this application will come back to be rezoned to rural residential and the retained lands to the rural exception zone. On council's decision, we will forward staff forward the municipal appraisal form onto the county of Land Division. And again, you had all the identical reports plus this individual application. And I'll take any questions regarding the severance.
I don't think there is any question is no questions.
It's pretty much carbon copy.
Carbon copy, that's what I was saying. Okay, can I have a motion that council of the township of Asphodel Norwood accepts this report regarding application consent application B one thirty-seven dash twenty-two Burns Lot two for information and further that the council of the township of Asphodel Norwood recommends or not recommends the consent application of B one thirty-seven dash twenty-two Burns Lot two. And further that the council of the township of Asphodel Norwood direct staff to submit municipal appraisal form to Peterborough County Land Division. You over?
I will watch that we recommend.
Recommend seconded by Deputy Mayor Byrd. All in favor? Never added to discussion because it's a carbon copy and we just. CAO. Yes, thanks, Ed. CAO Clerk Treasurer Candace Business Advisory Committee Terms of Reference.
Thank you. So staff was directed back at the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting of council to prepare a terms of reference for a business advisory committee. The hope and intent is for this committee to be able to take a look at some previously identified strategic outcomes. Some of them are in place, some of them are futuristic goals and mandates of this committee that choose local campaign that you see actively throughout the year, which our businesses, we on a regular basis receive feedback from them how grateful they are for that program where, you know, you shop local, you submit the receipt, you get a part of the draw, you get, you know, gift certificates from more local businesses, et cetera. The community guide, which is already existing, but then the farmers in artisan market and community gardens as well has been something that has popped up during strategic planning and always mentioned in, was mentioned in the master recreation survey, actually by some residents. Whenever they get an opportunity to put that forward as well as taking a look at identifying township opportunities for commercial growth, liaise with economic development partners, continue to support strategic plan objectives. Another big thing for this committee that I want to push is the community improvement plan. So it needs an update and some engagement with the business community, maybe some ongoing round tables with community business partners and aid partners, some focus groups. I'm really excited about this committee actually. So if the terms of reference are adopted today, township staff will put out a call for application for this committee and then we'll bring those applications and a recommendation forward for council to appoint the members. So I'll leave the council with any question.
Deputy Member.
Yeah, thank you through you, Mayor. Yeah, I am very excited about this committee. It looks great. When you're talking about the CIP, I know it's available within the downtown core of the village of Norwood. Are we also going to look at expanding that inside of those boundaries for more rural businesses having options available for maybe signage or something like that? Is that?
That was always, that has been the conversation today and the direction that we're going. That takes, there is a entire process around updating your CIP. And that area, that special project area, it's called under the act is adopted through bylaw. So we have to follow all of the prescribed regulations to update your community improvement plan. And we would have to update the area because as of right now, the bylaw says that a business can only apply to receive a CIP loan from in the downtown core area. So if we want to, but I think there needs to be like a full study and but I highly anticipate that recommendation coming forth as a part of that update, but there'll be many other things updated as well. But I, I think that was where we were, where we are headed, but it'll be up to council of the day to make that decision on the bylaw.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Candace, yeah, I'm really excited about this committee as well and I'm really happy to hear more talk about the farmers market, artisan market and perhaps a community garden, however that may roll out. But I think it's well needed to address not only food choice, but identifying maybe people that need more help. And so I think, you know, this looks really great. I hope I'd like to see how this evolves.
Counselor Greaves.
Through you, Mayor. Is this our non township residents eligible for this? Because I know some committees you are allowed to be not a resident and others you have to be a resident. I was just wondering about clarification for this particular one.
Sure. So the ones that have to be resident are normally prescribed under an act with the board.
Okay.
All of our committees that aren't prescribed under a piece of legislation, it's worded as a community member. So if you're a member of our community and want to give back to our community, but you don't necessarily reside within it, then that's okay. But on the boards, the legislation says that you have to reach out there. So that's the difference. It's basically board versus committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No. Can I have a motion then that council of the township of Asphodel Norwood accepts this report in regards to business advisory committee and to terms of reference for information? And further, the council of township of Asphodel Norwood approves the business advisory committee terms of reference as presented. Moved by Stephanie Greaves, Counselor and Counselor or Deputy Mayor Byrd. All in favor of that motion? That motion's carried. The action list and please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So the action list is before council. You'll see there's a fair bit of things we've taken care of on the seventeenth of January. Our next meeting is Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. So I anticipate that meeting going exceptionally well. We'll be taking care of some consent applications. You'll see four more coming forward. A lot of these are housekeeping items that you'll see annually. Development charge index, annual council remuneration report for twenty twenty-two council remuneration, fees and charges by law, all the fourth quarter reports. Those are pretty standard stuff. What you're going to see outside of that would be the river road speed concern. Potentially the sponsorship policy, but I think it's probably going to be pulled away from the fees and charges by law, but stay tuned on that. Annual development charge report, again, housekeeping, you say that this time would be quarter one of every single year, P S A compliance report, annual report you see first quarter of every single year. So a lot of stuff that's coming up that you'll get used to seeing because it comes forward once a year and it's basically reporting on activities that are, that is prescribed into provincial legislation that is taking place in the previous municipal year. And I'll take really any questions from council. The year shaping up before we know it, it'll be summer based on what we've got in front of us here. It doesn't take long. Don't take any questions.
Any questions, Counselors? Counselor.
Thank you through yours. Just one, I see that you have on future economic development action plan twenty-three, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. Will that in be any, will that be in the business advisory committee as well?
The action plan is not. It's a separate entity, so it's more going to govern the township's economic development, but I do foresee maybe some initiatives of the committee potentially being included in an actionable item. So I think there'll be things that the committee will take on that may be identified in the economic development plan, but they'll be, it'll reach further than that. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept this report, revision suggested by CAO Clerk Treasurer and members of council. Moved by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor War. All in favor? That motion's carried. C two. C two, a request for monetary donation to hospice. Would somebody wish to put forward a motion to support or non-support? Counselor Greaves.
I would like to, as per the donation policy, I would like to put forward that we do buy, sorry, bring gross, the maximum allowed per organization per year of five hundred dollars. As per the policy and that I would support that coming from our donation line as the hospice does data from their previous delegation last meeting, they have very actively been fundraising and this small, this monitoring donation, I would support that as per the donation policy.
Second. With a question, Deputy Mayor Byrd.
Yeah, I do agree with Stephanie that we do have that policy in place that it's a maximum of five hundred dollars. So I just have a question for Candace. Because it's different than the total country question, does another form have to be just to make the process clear, does another form have to be submitted or can we can we approve this today with the changes, even though they requested one? I just want to make sure that it's clear in the minutes and in our files and, you know, we're corresponding to our policy.
No, I understand the question. No, I wouldn't go back to the applicant and ask them to resubmit an application. And they've had the process explained to them. They're aware of the process. Council's motion will stand in the policy states like up to a maximum of five hundreds, even if someone submitted five hundred and council could still give them two fifty or a hundred. It's a maximum of five hundred per organization per annual calendar year. So if, just because the request, even if it was five hundred, which is compliant with the policy, council could still have the option promotion to change it to a different amount. So I would say, no, I wouldn't ask them to submit again. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Counselor ladies on their floor. Does anyone have anything they would like to bring forward?
I mean, maybe.
Things are looking good.
I know we have two members heading to Roma and I believe as part of our, as part of our bylaws, that they are to provide a written report to council following, yeah, we made that a bit following your, your trips to conventions. So just as a reminder to to our members, the inspector.
I like, I like that Deputy Mayor Byrd, especially if it's a report that's very similar to the one that Ed gave, how many pages that was.
It's not just on the back of an app.
Yeah.
I guess as long as it's written.
Moving on. CAO Clerk Treasurer List.
Yes, so I do have a couple of things. I don't know if council previous council staff has been communicating with MP Philip Lawrence's office in regards to a passport clinic. And I'm happy to report that one had been I'm happy to report that one had been scheduled. Let me just confirm here. It's going to be from eleven A M to two P M at the Norwood Town Hall.
The.
On March first.
Awesome.
Okay.
And so the time. So March first, Norwood Town Hall, eleven A M to two P M and they will be doing a mailer. To advertising to support it.
Good. And. Passport, right?
Passport clinic, yes.
Okay.
And one other quick thing, so just to follow up on the deputy mayor's comments, yes, we will be attending the Roma conference for the couple of days next week. We do have two delegations, one with the Minister of Health. As we chatted at our last council meeting that we put in a delegation and we hadn't received word that has been moved to Tuesday afternoon. But we are meeting with the Minister of Health and then we are meeting with the Minister of Culture Tourism and Sport on on the Monday. So that is great news and I'm sure we'll have good reports to get back when we return in February. That's it for me.
And there's no close set.
No.
Okay, we'll move on to bylaws then. Candace, if you care to.
Read them for you?
Read.
Of course. Being a bylaw to authorize borrowing from time to time to meet current expenditures during the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Be read first, second and third time and numbered by law twenty twenty three dash zero three.
Moved by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor War. All in favor? That motion's carried.
Being a bylaws provide for an interim tax levy and the payment of interim taxes for the year twenty twenty three be read first, second and third time and numbered by law twenty twenty three dash oh four.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Burt, seconded by Counselor Hodge Greaves, all in favor? That motion's carried.
Being a bylaw to impose water service charges for users of the Norwood Water System in the township of Assadell Norwood be read at first, second and third time and numbered by law twenty twenty three dash zero five.
Moved by Counselor War. Seconded by Counselor Hodge Greaves. All in favor? Motion's carried.
Being a bylaw to impose wastewater service charges for the users of the Norwood wastewater system in the township of Assadell Norwood be read for second and third time and numbered by law twenty twenty three dash zero six.
Move the Counselor Walsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Burt, all in favor?
Being a bylaw to set water service charges for the users of the Tribune State Water System in the township of Assadell Norwood be read first, second and third time and numbered by law twenty twenty three dash zero seven.
Move by Counselor War, seconded by Counselor Hodge Greaves, all in favor? A motion is carried.
And being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of the council of the township of Assadell Norwood held January seventeenth, twenty twenty three be read first, second and third time and numbered by law twenty twenty three dash zero eight.
Moved by Counselor Hodge Greaves, seconded by Deputy Mayor Burt, all in favor? Motion's carried. Future meeting schedules on there. Everybody is seeing what they are. And can I, let's see your meeting, future meeting schedule, which everybody has. Regular Zoom meeting on February fourteenth. Or call the chairs. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please? Move by Counselor Stephanie. Screen second. Counselor Walsh, all in favor? A motion's carried.